Welcome to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, I see we got a nice packed house tonight. Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is located to the left of the room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself each and every time you come to the podium to speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. Extra copies hopefully are still located over by the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representatives shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will have the opportunity to question the applicant. If this is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to the public and the board will move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at that point. With that, can we please call the first case?
PB 2021-08-1, upon the matter of request by Nixon Peabody, acting as agent for Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems LLC Verizon Wireless for preliminary and final site plan approval for the installation of a small cell wireless telecommunications unit attached to a newly placed utility pole located in the town's right-of-way in front of 359 Cascade Place, also known as 361 Cascade Place, in R3 residential district.
Please state your name.
I hope you can hear me through my mask.
Yep.
Good evening, members of the board. Jared Lusk with the law firm of Nixon Peabody, representing Verizon Wireless. With me this evening is Michael Crosby, Verizon Wireless RF Design Engineer, responsible for the project, and Robert Wilson and Chris Boyce, both representing Verizon. They're part of the real estate team that helped identify the locations of these projects and are here to answer questions. Also, Martin Willock is the gentleman in the black shirt in the second. He's the design engineer who did the plans in case there's questions.
Perfect.
Appreciate the board's time this evening. Just, I thought at first to, I know I've been in front of this board for 4G small cells in the right-of-way before, but I believe this is the first time that we've been, it's very hard for me to speak, my glasses fog up, so I'm trying to keep things moving here by pulling my mask away just a little bit. I've been in before this board for some 4G small cells that have been installed throughout the town. But as you may know from the media that was surrounded this, that the town of Veronicote was chosen as one of the first communities in the country, in upstate New York as well, to be, for Verizon to roll out its 5G network, millimeter wave network in the town. The town, I was excited about that, and since that announcement, we've been actively engaged in the design and rollout of that project. You may recall, or maybe you're aware, that in 2019, Verizon Wireless and the town of Veronicote entered into a right-of-way agreement that authorized Verizon to install wireless telecommunications facilities in the town right-of-way, subject to permit and site plan approval in certain circumstances. If we went on an existing pole, which is our choice and our preference, it was subject to a permit through the Department of Public Works. That right-of-way agreement was amended in 2021, April 21st of 21, and attached to the amendment was a list of 69 locations throughout the town that are permitted based on the fact that they're existing poles. So we have, we're well in the design, location, rollout of these facilities throughout the town. If you take out this package that says Fleetwood, make sure you pick the right one. Fleetwood Drive, that's the one we're talking about now. If you were going to the final page of that, this is Mike Crosby, he's responsible for the design of this network. You'll see that the blue blotches that are on this, the fourth page are the design in this part of the town, the Fleetwood Drive area of the town. Want to make sure you're all with me if you could, it's hard to see what you're looking at. Attorney, the last page.
Thank you.
We gave you, this is identical, virtually identical to the package that's in the application. We wanted to make it a little bit larger for you. But you can see that the blue blotches are proposed existing pole facilities. We have, again, we're trying to fill in the gap so that the entire area of the neighborhood is covered. So if I can just have Mike sort of describe this, how the millimeter wave wideband 5G coverage works and what he's trying to do in covering this neighborhood.
Yeah, my name is Mike Crosby, Verizon Wireless. I'm an RF engineer, worked in the wireless business, building out wireless networks for more than 26 years. And I'd forgotten how difficult it is to breathe through these masks.
Maybe you could take it off so we could hear better.
Oh, that'd be great. Oh, wow, freedom. So, Mike Crosby, hopefully you got that part. So, you know, as I mentioned, you know, I've been in this business for 26-plus years, and, you know, from an engineering standpoint, what we're deploying is really an evolution of the same wireless network. However, as time has gone on, the FCC has auctioned off additional bands of wireless spectrum, which we have to abide by all of the health and safety rules, the same as we have since the Telecommunications Act of 1996. Telecom FCC OET Bulletin 65B sets the standards for the wireless health and safety standards that these networks abide by, which that has not changed. And as, you know, my career has changed over the years, you know, we started off with a network of just trying to make a simple phone call from one person to another. That was the goal. And as we all know, that's changed a lot over the years, everything from text messaging to access to the internet. And now the wireless network continues to evolve with 5G. And the brand of 5G that is in question here is what's called ultra-wideband. This operates at the 28 gigahertz, 28 megahertz, sorry, 20 gigahertz, sorry. And that is a much higher frequency than our traditional networks. So you're used to our towers, like you have at the town hall or around town on water tanks. Those sites are designed to cover for several miles, and as time has gone on, the network has needed to be densified so that even those sites don't cover as large of a distance because of the demand on the network and the need to reuse the same spectrum, site by site by site. So in the LTE world, every single site transmits all of the exact same frequencies. In the old days, each site used to transmit unique frequencies so that they didn't interfere with each other. But you had to reuse those frequencies eventually, and that was what cell planning was all about. But in the LTE world, every site uses the same frequency. And in the 28 gigahertz world, which is the ultra-wideband that we're talking about here, because of the very high frequency, the very short wavelength that's associated with that, the cell sites are much smaller in footprint. And the design that's associated with these sites are the utility pole type deployments. So very different from what we're used to seeing with the bigger antennas up on it. You know, we used to use eight-foot antennas. We'd have 12 or 15 or 16 of them on a site. You know, now we're talking about three small antennas cluster mounted together to have a nice, you know, sort of a visual look to them so that they're sleek and trim to sit on top of the utility pole. So with the town of Veronicote, as you know, we have the MLA. It's our interest to obviously co-locate an existing utility poles wherever possible. But for these applications that you have before you, it's necessary for us to plant a new pole similar to the existing utility poles that are on the street in the right-of-way in order to fill in the gaps because there is otherwise no existing infrastructure for us to use. So these sites are designed to work together, sort of like pieces of a puzzle. So in the case of these sites, there's a puzzle piece missing. We need to plant a pole to fix that puzzle piece. So what's different about the ultra-wideband? You have up to 100 times faster throughputs. That translates into the applications, what this is intended to be used for, which is everything from high-speed broadband to your home to, you know, AR, VR. There's low latency and future applications that are continuing to be developed and deployed as we speak. So this is a transformational technology that's going, you know, Veronicote is, you know, at the forefront of that technology. There's dozens, if not hundreds, of other towns in New York State that are not at this stage yet. So this is actually pretty exciting for Veronicote. So there's a lot of, a lot of good things that are going to come from that. So that's really just sort of an introduction as to, you know, what's different about this and who I am.
So as part of that, part of the town's small cell ordinance that we worked with the town and they adopted, it requires anytime you need a new pole, you're required to come see the planning board for site plan approval. And so that's why we're here. Again, the 69 other facilities that have been approved don't require your approval. So this is just, now there will be other sites in Veronicote that, as we build this out, but these are the first ones that have come and are ready. So getting to the Fleetwood site, and then there's, if you look at this map, there's future other sites, there's Fleetwood 06, and this one's Fleetwood 08 is the one that we're doing. So there's, again, there's a planning. These antennas roughly service about 800 feet, and then obstructions that normally you would see the macro towers go through, transmit through, like trees and houses and things like that are very disruptive to the network. And so when you, if you don't mind, if you, if you place these things next to a tree, it blocks the coverage, so it's very sensitive. So again, we try to get, when we think about why existing utility poles work so well is they can usually aim the antennas to go down the street and get as many houses as we can and have it be less disruptive. Our goal here is to have very few, as few of these antennas in the network, in the neighborhoods as possible, whether on existing facilities or new poles. You'll notice when we talk about the Smiles Drive site, we were able to position it. We actually were able to eliminate one of the sites because we were able to find a location that was sort of equidistant with good, good visibility down the street, so it was able to minimize that issue. The issue, of course, with placing new poles is there's, in a residential neighborhood, we have to be, again, these antennas transmit roughly 800 feet, depending on the world around it, is that there are, you know, you're in front of somebody's house because we can't be out. You'd see traditionally with a, with a cell tower, you'd be in industrial zone or commercial zone, and it would cover residential neighborhoods without having to put a tower there. The fact remains that we've tried very hard to locate existing. It's very easy, we call up RG&E and we find poles that work, and we place these antennas on the tower and file a permit with the commissioner, with Mr. Kylie, and we're up and running. Obviously, we'd like to avoid the need for new poles and if nothing else, to appear before the planning board for site plan approval on these sites because there's many of them and it slows down the development process. But we're here, obviously, because we can't live, we can't complete this network without putting up a new pole. So I put in front of you the RG&E, this is RG&E's AVN Grids Guidelines for Installing on new towers. You should keep this because this will be referred to throughout all of our design. Obviously, probably there's people in this, in this room that are asking the question, why don't you put the antenna on the existing pole behind my house, for example, with Fleetwood? If you turn to the second page of the package that I just gave you, we put in a red box around the various list of pole types excluded from antenna installation. So RG&E won't let us on this, and I won't read you the, there's a lot of sort of technical information, but poles that have a certain equipment already on them or certain site distribution wires, poles that are older than 50 years old, poles that are 35 feet or less, these are in this list. One of the, one of the local rules that isn't on this is they will not allow us to install our projects on private property that can't be reached with a bucket truck. Or like, for example, behind people's homes. They will not allow us to install on those poles. And so when we get to neighborhoods where the bulk of the antenna, or excuse me, the utility poles are behind people's house or located on private property that are not, that you cannot reach that utility pole with a standard bucket truck from RG&E, they will not allow us to use those poles, they're excluded. And so since they own the poles and they have the right, we don't, we simply don't have the right to be here. So, for example, in Fleetwood, the Fleetwood site, if you were to go to Tab E, we provided you, excuse me, Tab F, we provided you with a search area. And it's a ring roughly, right, again, we want to be, we need to be about 800 feet, a space of about 800 feet between the poles. And so as Mike and his team look and say, if we're going to place one in this area, you see this red ring, Tab F of our applications, have you all seen this? Just want to make sure you understand what I'm looking at. First thing that Chris and Robert do as part of their job, again, with Martin, is they all walk out to that, they do a neighborhood walk. Maybe some neighbors actually saw these guys out walking around one day, looking, again, looking at the utility poles. First trying to find one that works, that meets the RG&E qualifications, et cetera, to be able to install it on an existing site. So here, this ring is what they, is the general vicinity of where they need to be. Again, to provide that even spacing that's documented here. So we can close the holes, the blue gridding. So this pole, this area was identified, and in that immediate vicinity, there were approximately, I didn't count them, seven existing poles within that vicinity. And as you'll see from each of them, it says the existing utility poles not in the public right-of-way. Attachment is not permitted pursuant to the RG&E standards because it can't be reached by a bucket truck. And we have each of them, 8A, you can see, we have each of those locations plotted. And again, just not reachable by a bucket truck. On page two of that, again, Pole 3, RG&E Pole 3, which looked to be, when I first went out there, to be the most ideal alternate location. It already has wireless, or has existing telecommunications equipment installed unrelated to Verizon's system. So then that, based on the list of information, that's not permitted. And then the other three, again, were all on private property outside of the reach of a bucket truck and therefore not permitted by RG&E. So again, we've searched that vicinity. It has to be in the area of that ring to sort of fit into that grid within, you know, there is some discretion in that ring, a little bit of where it goes. But again, it's not something you can move to the next intersection. It sort of has to be in that area. And again, there just wasn't, there wasn't an available existing pole to attach to, so we proposed a new pole. And then it's a matter of locating existing utilities. Where's the, where's the most logical location? Obviously, the pole's going to be in front of somebody's house or in somebody's, that there is not a pole there now. But again, it's in the town right-of-way, and part of, you know, part of our agreement is to build that 5G network to find the most appropriate location. So with there, I'll stop and ask if the board has any questions about, on this particular application, as to how we picked that location or why we're doing what we're doing.
I'll open it up to my board members.
There are existing poles on the other, if I walked over Cascade on Echo, there are poles on that. Is there a reason why you couldn't do it on that corner instead of the corner you chose? Let me see, Cascade, I just want to-
I mean, it would be a brand-new pole. I'm not loving this brand-new pole, but-
Either do we, for reasons.
Alan, where are you referring to?
Could you point it out on this map?
If I just cross Cascade, if I walk across the street at that other corner on Echo?
Yep. So literally across the street.
Yeah, there's an existing pole further down on Echo. It would just sort of tie in.
I believe that's one of the poles that is not in the public right-of-way.
No, I'm asking, why can't they install that pole on that corner as opposed to the other corner? Is my question.
Okay.
I get that you're going to put in a new pole, there's probably not a whole lot we can do here. But I'm just asking if that corner, at least according to my map that I'm looking at here.
Could you draw maybe on that?
Sure, I'll even show you. That's Echo, see the pole right there?
Yes.
In that corner?
So there's, there's already, so you want to-
I don't want it on that pole. What I'm saying is, it would just make more sense if I had more poles that were in line on that corner, and I would stop it there as opposed to go across the street.
So I'm-
And I'm not sure if you can't do that because there's trees there or something else.
So are you referencing, I'm sorry, people can't see, but like in Veronicote, in this yard right here? Like literally across the street?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking.
I don't know why we selected that corner.
You can see that there's a pole right there, and it would just-
So it's just like, we're continuing the line. I understand what you're saying, we told you we couldn't use that because it was just-
Right, no, I know that there is because I've driven there, believe me.
And again, this is an awkward situation, again, because probably somebody lives in that house, and now you're saying, hey, put a second, second pole in front of their house. Is that what you're suggesting?
What, that actually is not in front of their house, or doesn't appear to be. It appears to be at the other neighbor's house, the one for their-
Alright, so just follow that line, and then I wasn't there. Martin, if you, you and whoever was at the site visit for this could come on up to the microphone and explain why this particular site was chosen?
Before you guys, before you guys go there, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what we're, what we're talking about here. So, Alan, I don't know if you can see my laptop here because I've got the poles pulled up, but I believe this is the pole that you're referring to further down the line? So you're stating, put it here rather than over here?
Right, as across the street.
I guess, I'm not, oops, I'm not sure what putting it on one side of the street versus the other. Right, but it's still, it's still in line, it's just on the other side of a, a street. I don't know what that-
I'm just thinking because it doesn't continue beyond that corner.
If you can turn back to Exhibit F?
I can turn back anywhere.
Well, go back to F. And you can see the number 3 in that area that you're describing. That's the Pole 3 that we described, has the existing equipment on it.
Yep.
And what you were suggesting is potentially installing a pole along that front, the front of that house there, somewhere between there and the corner, correct?
In the corner, the way you were doing it across the street. I'm not suggesting the exact placement of anything.
If you look down, you see those two trees that we're looking at that are on those two corners? Remember, I told you how disruptive the trees are? So when they chose the location, from a logical perspective, they went on the other side because it has a clear view up those two side streets. And if you were to put it anywhere in that front, going up and down those streets, the front of the houses where the coverage is sort of aimed to would be blocked by those two sets of trees.
Then you did answer my question.
No, he just answered, I didn't know the answer till he-
See, there's always somebody smarter than I am.
Well, not me, but that's why. So that's why they chose that location across the street.
Okay, that was my question. What's a pole made out of?
Standard utility pole.
Nice. Okay. I'm done, nothing further?
No questions.
Is there any way to maybe pull it back a couple of feet so that the utility pole would be on the side of this person's house instead of in the front? So, so you see how you have the red dot?
Yep.
And I guess if it were me, I don't know, maybe the homeowner's here tonight and they can speak to that, I'd rather have this utility pole on the side of my house than if it were on the front.
So maybe south on-
You know, just slightly south on Cascade Place. It shouldn't be that much of a shift, but at least it would be not on the facade of my house.
There are two pine trees there that would also potentially shield it from that residence as well.
Again, the antennas are designed to shoot up and down both streets.
I understand.
So if you were to go down south on that, you'd be blocked. You know, you'd get good north and south coverage, but your east and, assuming this is east and west, your east and west coverage would be diminished. So again, the point is to try to get up and down, and that's the answer. We can look at that however, if you'd like.
Oh, sometimes in the past, we've had the companies paint the cabinets of the items that are affixed to the pole brown so that at least that portion is a color match to the utility pole. And then they have left the antenna piece, whatever gray color it is usually. I noticed a few of those that we had done on St. Paul Boulevard previous to when this was administrative, and I think that makes a difference. So maybe that's something we could consider.
I think it is, and I don't know what color the equipment boxes are. Right, so again, we'll look and see if they can be painted like the other, like the 4G cells. I just, we can confirm that question. I don't think we have an objection to it if possible, but let me look, see if it's possible.
I don't know for sure, there's sometimes-
Yeah, they're heated and cooled, so sometimes the paint, if you add it, it could impact it. But again, we'll look at that.
I know we had those ones done, so I guess it's probably possible. I mean, it's not a, it's not fixing the situation, but it is helping a little bit, I think.
Yep, that's a fair question, we'll look into that.
Y'all set, Mr. Huber, for now? Just to clarify something that you said earlier, when Mr. Richards asked what the pole was made out of, you said standard utility pole. Am I assuming that that is a treated wood pole?
Correct.
Just for clarity.
Behind the houses, I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to be-
Okay, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, no other questions from the board on this?
Not at the moment.
This is a public hearing, correct? Alright, you guys take a seat. At this point, we will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak in regards to this matter, please come to the podium, state your name and address. How you doing?
Good, how are you? How you doing?
Good.
Reginald Lane, I live at 359 Cascade Place. So the pole is going to affect me more. And my girlfriend, I live there, renewed to the neighborhood, moved there in January of this year. So I just got some questions about the health concerns with the 4G and 5G, what them potentially causing like cancer, stuff like that, so.
Okay, we will absolutely ask the applicant to address that. Anything else regarding?
They mentioned it going in the side by the pine trees, but that affects the communication. So, you know, I'd rather for not to be there. I like the pine trees, we like the way it looks, so, yeah.
Okay.
I was unclear, so your placement prior preference would be for it to be in the front?
Well, no, I wouldn't do it at all.
Well, okay, I hear you.
I mean, you said it's a small tower, but how small? Because, you know, nobody wants to walk out and just look at a tower like, oh, you know.
It's like a telephone pole.
Okay, so a regular telephone tone?
Yeah, it's pretty much a telephone pole with a little like antenna on the top, and there's generally some boxes that are attached to it. So I understand completely what you're saying. And I don't know if they'll say it's possible, but it would be helpful for us to know if you did have a preference for the location, whether you would like it in the front or on the side of the house.
Okay, I also have one more question. Maybe one day I might want to sell that property. I would like to stay in Veronicote, stay in New York, but I might have issues selling with the property if somebody would walk out and say, oh, you know, I don't want to see that pole in front of the house, and I have nothing I can do about it, so. Back then with the taxes and everything.
I do have one quick question. Were you notified by the applicant in any fashion?
No, I just got the letter in the mail, so I had to come here, so I didn't know.
From the town of Veronicote?
Yeah, from the town of Veronicote, yep.
Verizon, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you state your name again so I can get it right?
Yeah, it's Reginald Lane.
Thank you, Reginald.
Mr. Lane, did you have a preference on the location?
Um, like I said, I don't wanna do it-
I know, I know. If, if you don't, if you don't have a preference at all, that, that's one thing, I just trying to be helpful.
I mean, I guess if it was across the street, I wouldn't-
What?
Okay.
Yep.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you very much.
And I'll just comment for the board, um, the DA, uh, the resident mentioned health effects of 5G wireless. The board's limited in what it can consider as far as radio frequency emissions and their environmental effects. So I would just caution the board before making that part of any determination it makes.
Fair enough, thank you. Anyone else like to speak, please?
Hi, I'm Luke Leegge, and I live at 400 Cascade Place. And I just had a few questions about the poles, or the proposed pole. What the power source is gonna be for this pole, the equipment on the pole, is it solar-powered, or? Are they gonna have to run utilities to that new pole? Because currently, there's no utilities in that area, there's, there's absolutely no poles on Cascade Place at all. So it's gonna change the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I would imagine as they wanna build their network out further, they're gonna ask for more and more poles. I just think for the aesthetics of the neighborhood, maybe they oughta consider a few bad spots in their network, which they've been dealing with for years with other technology, so. There's also several poles on Echo that I think, not being an expert in the, uh, the, uh, communication business, but I think they would be sufficient to provide better coverage than no pole at all, but to change the aesthetics of the neighborhood. I see there's several of these sites already around the neighborhood, uh, there's several new poles that were installed. And I don't know who installed the poles, but they obviously didn't hire a contractor to finish the, uh, groundwork around the poles, because there's just piles of dirt and spoils, and no attempt to, uh, restore the ground. And that's all I wanted to add.
Perfect. Duly noted, thank you.
Would you state your name clear for me, I didn't catch up?
Sure, it's Luke Leegge, L-E-E-G-E.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing none, um, I will close the public hearing. Uh, would the applicant like to come back up and address any of the questions?
Just, uh, ask Martin Willicks, the project engineer, describe how the power's gonna, how the facility's gonna be fed with power.
Both sites?
Well, you can talk about both sites, at least this is the Fleetwood site.
Yeah, let's keep it to the, let's keep it to the Cascade site, the Fleetwood site, please.
Fleetwood?
Yes, please.
Okay, uh, my name's Martin Willicks, I prepared the drawings for Verizon Wireless, I work for Erdman Anthony. Uh, Fleetwood Drive, uh, full fiber and electric is proposed to be brought to the proposed pole underground along Echo. Just east of one home, east of the proposed pole, is a backlot utility pole line crossing of Echo. And the, there's a pole right there at that backlot utility pole line crossing. Underground electric and underground fiber are proposed to be buried from that pole parallel to Echo, crossing Cascade to the proposed pole location. And in this instance, currently, our GNE is directing us to put the meter on the, on the power source pole, so that would be the pole located east of the proposed pole. And just note that Smiles Drive, the direction from our GNE is slightly different.
So it won't go on your pole, the, the meter, right?
For Fleetwood Drive away, the meter is proposed on the proposed pole.
On the ar- on your proposed pole?
That's correct, on the antenna pole.
Got it.
And am I, am I correct in looking at the, the drawing here, that it, it is, uh, am I seeing that this is gonna be bored rather than open trench?
That's, that's correct, currently, the plan is directional drill, so we don't disturb the driveway that we cross coming from the east, nor disturb the pavement of Cascade Drive.
Okay. Great. Thank you for clarity on that.
Included in the application, uh- Tab L to the each application is the proof of compliance with the, uh, federal emission standards, as, and as your counsel has advised, when we provided that information, uh, that, that limits the, the board's review of the health and safety. Um, the power, that was the question, power source, health, uh, restoration, uh, again, that's, uh, our GNE's poles, but that's, that point is well-taken, uh, in terms of how we, I imagine those are replacement poles that were installed, because if it was a new pole, we'd be in here, so the replacement poles, it's, they're our GNE, our GNE's poles. They arrange, uh, although we pay, they arrange for that pole to be installed, and so we'll work with them on the, on the installation, it's, it's out of our hands, it's their own property, all we're doing is installing on their pole when it's installed.
Okay, but would you make that part of your agreement with them? On your memo with our GNE, the installation of this pole would also cover the ground covering being restored back to what it was?
That, 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 that's, that's, yeah, that's fine.
That, that's what you will-
We can control that, we, we, we have nothing to do with the other poles, but when we install a new pole, we are in control.
No, but you wouldn't let them put a 10-foot pole in if you needed a 30-foot pole, right, it would be part of the agreement?
Right.
Okay, so you can make this part of the agreement?
Cor-correct, I can, well, I'll talk to them.
Got it, nope.
The only other, um, sort of indirect question that I heard from the public that maybe you can address is regarding pole, uh, size and height. Uh, could you speak a little bit to the height of the pole?
The, the pole is thirty, uh, 35 feet tall, I believe. Above ground level, it's, it's, obviously, I think there's a, uh, six or eight feet of the pole that are, is buried, so the above-ground portion, if you look, 34 feet is what I'm being, here it is, uh, top of the new pole, if you look at sheet C4 of the plans, that has the, the drawing, it's 34 feet above the uh, ground is the pole, and then the antenna is bolted to the top of that. The top of the antenna goes, it, it extends 3.4 feet above the top of the pole, so the top of the antenna is 37.4 feet above ground, and the, uh, pole is 34 feet above ground, which is consistent with the height of the towers and, uh, other poles in the neighborhood. That's generally how tall they are.
Okay.
Along residential areas, sometimes they're 44 and larger, larger poles.
Okay. Alright, you gentlemen can have a seat, thank you. Board have any discussion on this? I know we discussed possible painting, which we didn't really get an answer on.
I don't think there's the same box situation that there has been in the past, before it was a big square box that was going on the side of these. It appears to me that these are much smaller utility, probably, boxes on the, uh, side, and they, you may not wanna run away if I'm stating this wrong. Instead of the big boxes that were installed previously, there are smaller boxes, correct? And then the antenna on top is just the freestanding piece that you're going to be communicating through.
I guess the best way to describe it is with the picture, I don't wanna-
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm referring to.
So on sheet C4, if I'm-
Yeah.
Following along here, there's a utility meter, which I believe our GNE does not allow you to paint.
Right. Yeah, no, it's on C4 right here.
Yep, yep, we got it, yep. Yep, so, so the, I, I know we've discussed the meters in the past, and our GNE does not allow painting the meter. Um, is my understanding.
Correct.
Um, so then we're left with a, uh, relatively small or two small boxes above that, any thoughts, Mr. Huber, on on that?
I recognize, yeah, it's not like the other ones, if it were my house, I'd like to see them brown. I mean, it is, I mean, if other people don't feel the same way, then that's fine, I, but anything that I, we could do to diminish it at all, I think would be the best thing we could do, because I wouldn't be thrilled about it in the first place, I can understand anybody's opposition to it. So even though it's a minor thing, if it helps a little bit, I realize that it's a maintenance issue, but, I mean, everybody has property that they have to maintain.
Yet I don't know if it's, if it's possible, well, certainly, we can look into that.
Okay, thank you. So what's the, uh, what's the board's feeling, uh, with regards to this, and specifically the, the painting issue, is that a, a conditionable item that we're comfortable with? Or are we-
As a requirement, or as a, uh?
Well, as a condition, if, if the equipment allows.
Yeah, if the equipment allows, sure. The only thing that I would want to add is that in their agreement with our GNE, that the, um, ground is put back to the way it was found.
Okay, so are, are we comfortable moving forward on this tonight, okay? Alright, so first we have to address, address seeker, which, um, I believe is an unlisted action. Is that correct?
Uh, give me one minute to check, and I'll, I don't know if it's unlisted or not.
I don't know, what did the attorney say?
Uh, he's, he's just checking something. I believe this falls into the unlisted action. Orders.
Do we have a part one and part two, DAF?
Would it go under type two, because it's an extension of, uh, utility distribution facilities and then telephone?
Spare us one minute, folks.
I'd be inclined to say it's a type two under-
Yeah, I would too.
617.5C.
That's what I think, it's a type two.
Type two, number 13.
Thank you.
Alright, if you'd like, Mr. Chair, I had PB 2021081, that we accept the application as presented with the following conditions, that if possible, the-
Well, hang on, Mr. Richards, we gotta, we gotta vote on seeker first, correct?
If it's type two-
If it's a type two-
Type two, we do not, okay, alright, thank you, go ahead, Mr. Richards, I'm sorry.
With the following conditions, that the, uh, utility boxes that are exposed on the pole be painted a matching color to the pole, if possible.
And that does not include antenna? Correct?
I don't think so, because-
We're just talking about the boxes down on the pole, I just wanna make sure we're clear on that.
It would be best if it were the same gray as the sky, whatever that, the, whatever they call that sky gray color, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure anybody's gonna visibly see that antenna until they look up.
Well, to paint it brown, I think it would stick out more, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think, I think the utility boxes themselves.
Okay, thank you.
And then, uh, that the, uh, the applicant in their agreement on the pole placement include landscaping that would match the existing condition.
I'm sorry, Mr. Richards, would you state that one more time while I write it down here?
That the applicant, in their agreement with the utility pole provider, put in a condition that the, uh, the landscaping is returned to its existing condition.
Thank you. Alright, do I have a second?
Second.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have what, 1, 2, 3 absent. Alright, motion carries. Thank you. When you're ready. Ms. Secretary?
PB 202108-2, upon the made of request by Nixon Peabody, acting as agent for Bell Lantic Mobile Systems LLC, Verizon Wireless, for preliminary and final site plan approval for the installation of a small cell wireless telecommunications unit attached to a newly placed utility pole located in the town's right-of-way in front of 220 Lafayette Road in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Jared Lusk with Nixon Peabody, 1300 Clinton Square, Rochester, New York. Um, I won't, uh, we've already gone through the, the, what it is, I think we can, if, if the board's inclined, I can just go through to the site selection of this particular site.
That would be fine.
If you look at tab F of the application, this is a unique, uh, neighborhood with those three streets coming in together, so we wanted to, uh, as best we could to try to, uh, and again, this is the one I was talking to you about in our preliminary presentation, where we were able to locate a tower, a facility here, uh, and cover a lot more ground than usual. Um, and so, it's, it's picked in this strategic area in that ring on tab F because of its location. Again, existing structures within 200 feet, uh, is what we looked at again. Uh, whole, uh, all three of K, P, and O, those are, uh, that are listed, couldn't, they're on private property, couldn't be reached by the bucket truck, and so, uh, just the nature of the neighborhood and the location of the utilities, uh, we were forced here to install a new pole, same height, same, uh, equipment as what was, uh, described in the previous application, again, in front of 220 Lafayette Road. And if you look at the package, you can see the unique with the three different streets coming here, so it's able to shoot up each of those three roads.
Can you just explain to me where exactly, um, the pole is gonna be placed?
It's going to be placed-
Is it on the tree lawn, or is it on the, some other location?
I didn't hear you, is it-
Is it on the tree lawn?
Uh, it is.
Like, what the hell's a tree lawn, right?
So it's between, it's not in the triangle on the corner?
No.
It's between the sidewalk and that tree?
Correct.
And the dead-end sign?
Correct.
It's, if you see on C4, simulation is there. It's between the tree and the dead-end sign, exactly, yeah.
Any other questions different on this one? Ms. Murray, anything? Mr. Huber? Alright, if you'd take a seat for a moment. This is a public hearing as well, so we will go ahead and open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this matter, please come to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Elizabeth Ballantyne, I reside at 154 Grantham Road, which is across the street from the proposed zone. I'm also here with Val Erig, the owner of 220 Lafayette Road, and I'm also here speaking on her behalf. Um, the proposed location, thank you for all of the information that you gave into site selection, that did answer some of my questions, so that does help very much. As you can see in the zone in front of her property, already in the town right-of-way, there is a stop sign- As you can see in the zone in front of her property, already in the town right of way, there is a stop sign, there is a tree, and there is a dead end sign. It is very full. Um, putting this utility pole in this place, I'm really concerned for emergency services to be able to see the address of that home because the town right of way would then be full and really stacked well together. Um, in the town of Veronicote, it's, you know, listed on your website that you do value the tr- tree lined streets and the programs that are put in place to replace them, so trying to just dodge a tree on the streets in the town of Veronicote is really quite difficult. So I don't think that there isn't much around that. Um, as you can probably see on the maps that are given to you, there is that little green island in the middle of this very awkward intersection. Um, I think that would be a better place for that to potentially go. It's completely unused, sits right in the middle. Um, also I do, I am glad to hear that there has been addendums put on for there to be accountability for the property to be returned, to be returned to its previous state upon installation because that has been an issue in the past with other construction things in the neighborhood. Um, let's see, on the list. Um, also, I mean, there are other strips of property that would not be front facing portions of property. Even the side of my own property, one fifty four, is just straight empty grass that could still be reached with a buch- bucket truck, would not be close to necessarily large trees and would still serve the purpose without blocking all of the road frontage in front of one property. That is all.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else on this topic? Please, come to the podium, state your name.
My name's Jake Patterson. I live at, uh, two thirty eight Lafayette Road. Um, as far as this project, it will have to be some coring involved to get the power where it's going. There are some better locations on that road that would not require the coring, as well as look more aesthetically pleasing. Um, as was mentioned, it's pretty tight on that dead end area. Um, can't really think of too good of a way where you could put that pole and not block the stop sign. Um, we've already had quite a few issues with people running the stop sign. Um, again, making it harder to see, becomes a bigger safety issue there as well. Um, there are small children in the area. Um, I don't think anyone's really looking to have them be hurt. Um, I also was wondering if we would have access to some of the plans, so we would be able to, I guess, have a bit more preparation for, um, kinda seeing what you guys are doing. Um, we just kinda found out about this last minute.
You received a letter from the, from the town, is that correct?
Couple days ago. It just kinda said to show up here, but we didn't really get a whole lot of information about what was actually going to happen. Um, so if nothing else, I'd kindly ask that maybe we be given a bit of time to review um, the hard copy of what's actually being planned to go in there. Um, the sign in front of our house just said, oh, there's a meeting for the right of way here, but it didn't really specify what it was, or where it was going.
Um, duly noted, um, we will discuss that, and just so you're aware, plans are always available in the, uh, town office as well. Um, so you can at any time come in and, uh, you know, review any of the applications.
Okay. Um, yeah, I, I guess ultimately I'd just maybe like a little bit more information on it before eventually a decision is made, if you guys don't mind.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I will respond to one of, uh, that residence's comments, just, just for clarity's sake, since you didn't see the, the drawings. Um, the proposed pole is located after the stop sign. Um, so it certainly would not impede upon the stop sign, just for clarity purposes, but, uh, if you have comments, please come to the podium and you, you may state them. Would anyone else like to speak?
Jake Patterson, two thirty eight Lafayette again. Um, there is currently a stop sign right about where that is. Um, I don't really see how they would be able to spend all that in without disturbing the, um, stop sign.
So the, uh, i- if you have that in front of you now, um, the proposed pole is, is proposed to be located between the tree and the sidewalk.
Okay.
Um, so it would be well after the stop sign.
Um, may I take this back to show my neighbors?
Uh, I believe so, yes. I don't think that's a problem, correct, Ms. Secretary? That's, okay, yes, please go right ahead.
I have one moment.
Yep.
I, I, I sent it to some people. We, we email it to people, anyone who asks to, so, if you have copies, sure.
Would anyone else like to come to the podium to address this?
My name is Dionne Woodley. I live at one sixty two Grantham Road, and I heard somebody say that it, it just doesn't seem logical to me, and if my first thought is that, that utility pole that goes down is at the end of the dead end. There's a utility pole, and I thought, well, why not put it there? But they, they already addressed that. But it makes absolutely no sense to put it there at that, with all the other stuff that's going on at that corner. It's, it does, it's not logical to put it there. I mean, it works for, for Verizon, but it doesn't work for us. Um, I, I guess I'm just ag- against it altogether. It just makes no sense to put it there. Absolutely no sense. And, um, it, it all falls right in front of two twenty uh, Lafayette, um, right in front of her house with all the other signs, the other, or the two signs and the tree and it, it's just too much going on at that, uh, stop sign and right, you know, with the tree and the dead end sign.
Ma'am, can I ask you one question, ma'am? Yeah, right, yeah. Would you prefer it in that plot of land across the street?
I would, I would definitely be more open to that. I mean, it's, my thought is, is an eyesore, but in, if that's where they have to put it, um, I mean, in preference, that would be a better spot than right in front of two twenty Lafayette.
I appreciate your answering the question, thank you.
Thank you.
I, can you come back to the podium? I missed your name. I shouldn't have. You said it nice and clear, but I missed it.
Dionne Woodley.
Woodley, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little nervous, I'm sorry.
No, no, take your time. Please state your name for the record. You're fine.
My name is Valerie Erig.
And your address, please?
Two twenty Lafayette Road.
Thank you, ma'am.
I do not want this in front of my house. There's too much things in front of my house already. I just don't see where it's gonna. I just don't want it. I know, I have a gully behind me, but I understand. The trucks can't get back there, I guess. There's a lot of land back there. There's a lot of poles back there. I guess they can't put it back there. The circle would be fine with me. There's nothing there. Just saying. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Take your, take your time, you're fine.
That's all I wanted to say.
Okay.
I really don't want it in front of my house, so thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you for talking to us.
Would anyone else like to speak on this matter tonight? Okay, I'm gonna leave the public hearing open for the moment. I'd like to ask the applicant to come back up and, and address these, just in case there's any major changes to what we're talking about.
I have a larger picture with regard to where it's located. And it, there, there seems to be plenty of space, uh, respectfully, to install it on that corner. Uh, here's the green area that you're, you're suggesting. We, we can explore that, um, whether or not it could go in that green area. Uh, I don't have that, I don't have that answer now. There's utility issues in whether we could bore, you know, directionally bore and things like that, but we'd have to explore that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, wi- with that, I think I will close the public hearing, uh, and then we can discuss. Public hearing is closed. Discussion from the board.
I think at the applicant's request, we, uh, we table this item and ha- give him the opportunity to be able to, uh, evaluate the, uh, necessity of moving it across to the green space. I think it complies with what we've been told from the community as well as his desire to take a look at that. Wasn't our first choice when we saw it, but I also don't live there, so I wanna do what's best for the community. So that would be my motion.
Uh, personally speaking, I, I, I don't like the idea of it in the circle. I think it makes it more noticeable. Um, however, I don't live there, and I heard from many people here that they would prefer to have it there. So I will defer. I would ask if, um, that location is possible, if they can look at doing something around the base of it or something to make it not just a pole in the middle of the cir- of the middle of the street, when can you put some bushes or something around the base of it so that, um, just to dull it up a little bit, that would be nice. Um, again, um, not my personal choice, but I, I heard from at least two people here that they'd rather have it in the circle, so.
With regard to the landscaping, we can explore that, the issue of course, there's three roads coming in there, and there's gonna be a lot of snow that gets piled up.
Understood, understood. Yep, the, we're, we're good, thank you. Okay, I, I would just like to say that I, uh, I echo your sentiments exactly. I personally don't think that's a good location. I think it's gonna be much more noticeable, however, um, I think it's our job and duty to listen to the residents in the area, and that's, that's what at least the residents that are here and the most affected residences are, are stating, so I, I agree with you on that. So, um,
I'll see that, you know, we do a lot of parking lots and we get, you know, the snow and the salt. There's plants that you can find that are salt tolerant or whatever, I think, that would do a little something to make it a little more palatable.
Okay, I think it's pretty clear how the, how the board feels, so. Um, is the applicant, uh, acceptable of, uh, tabling this item to do some further review on that, uh, that location? Okay, thank you very much. Alright, we had a motion by-
To adjourn the case until next month.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Richards, do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And we have three absent. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed. This, this will be back, uh, again at a further meeting.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure, will we be notified when that comes back on? That was my question.
Um, usually not. I'll tell you when the next meeting is. I guess we could make, we could do that if you'd like to.
I would, I would like to request that you do.
Then yes, the same people will get notified. Yes, okay.
You're welcome. Thank you. Alright, let me just do a little housekeeping here on my paperwork, before you pull, call the next one if you, if you would. Just wait one second if you would. I'm sorry, I just wanna get my paperwork in order here. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. You too.
How we doing?
Yeah, okay. Good, okay. Alright, could call the next case.
Upon the made of request by Bergman Engineers acting as agent for Veronicote Senior Living LLC for sign approval to install a monument sign for Veronicote Senior Housing Project on premises twenty five ninety Culver Road in an R five residential district.
Good evening, I'm Scott Procius, Director of Finance and Development with Rochester Management, who is the owner, developer, and property manager of Veronicote Senior Apartments. And Bergman Associates has submitted a site plan for the monument sign inside the property to, um, notify people that they are at, uh, the apartment complex. Um, I don't know if the board had any questions from our previous, uh, workshop planning?
Just, just for the public's knowledge and, and for the record, could you just kind of go through the, the design of the sign slightly, just so that the, the public can hear that?
Sure. The, the design of the sign, it says a cast stone copying base with a stone veneer to match the building. Um, it's midnight blue and natural clay colors also to match the building si- the, the vinyl siding of the building. Um, it's a high density urethane dimensional sign and posts, which will read Metal Reserve of Veronicote and Rochester Management as the property manager. From the original design, we have looked at, um, changing the font, and we will be updating the font to a cardara font, which will make it a little softer, um, not as boxy, industrial. Um, we took that, um, Brad, Mr. Huber's, um, recommendation on that, we did take a look at that, and, um, so that softens the font up a little bit. It's not a very big change, but it does add a little bit more roundness to some of the letters than the original boxy design. Um, I know we had questions on lighting. There will be some landscape lighting, so the sign can be visible at night.
What does that mean?
Um, just, so in the ground, there will be just the, the landscape lighting, so the sign can be seen at night since it's very close to the road, the driveway in and the sidewalk. seen at night, since it's very close to the roadway in and the sidewalk.
And just for the record, would you say where the sign is going to be? And then, I'm going to ask you a little bit more to flush out that lighting for us.
So as you enter the property from the Haul de Park entrance and start moving to the right toward the building, the sign will be on the right-hand side. There's a concrete walkway.
And by that, you mean the east portion of the?
Yes, the east portion of the property. And as it, the walk, as the driveway kind of starts to turn back toward the building, the sign will be there on the right-hand side between the driveway, and then there's a little grass area and a concrete sidewalk that walks through the path.
Got it. And then, by landscape lighting, do you mean like the little lights that I buy at Home Depot that?
They're a little bit more powerful than that. Not powerful, but just like a landscape garden lighting that will just be shined on the sign, so the sign can be.
So it is a projection lighting? It's not a way?
Correct.
Okay.
So it'll be, I'm sorry, Alan, just to further clarify, it'll be ground-mounted?
Ground-mounted.
And a small spotlight of sorts that shines up on the face of the sign?
Correct.
Both sides?
Both sides.
Okay. Thank you.
You're going to do it on the east side, too? Or you're doing it on the west side?
No, just on.
The west side, but projecting us on both sides?
On the, no, sorry, on the sign of the letter.
West-facing sign.
I should have clarified when I said both sides, and not from both ends, I guess.
Right.
Sorry.
I just wanted to make sure we were all talking about the same thing.
Yep, yep.
Do you know what the lumens are on the lamp?
I do not, sorry.
I'm going to tell you, they're not going to be more than 4,000 Calvin?
Can clarify that for certain, but I believe so.
It shouldn't be an issue. Most landscape lights are more up in the 5,000 range. Or, I'm sorry, 3,000 range.
And are they going to be, is that going to be on 24/7, or what is the intent?
Just, it'll be on a timer for, at evenings and overnight.
So it'll be on all night?
Yes.
And is there any spill on this at all?
There, I know that was part of the conversation during earlier planning meetings, to eliminate any spillage, but I'd have to make that 100% certain, but that is the intent, that there will not be any spillage of that lighting.
Okay. I mean, I want to do this tonight, I get a little leery when I don't see stuff.
I'm going to agree, I feel a little uncomfortable without, usually we'll see the specs on the lighting and the fixture, and if you change the font, we would usually see a rendering of the font. I see, I looked it up on the internet, it looks like.
It's very similar.
It's very, it's, yeah.
Did bring examples of the font.
Okay. And I probably wouldn't give it such a hard time, it's just that it's already, I mean, it's on top of these houses, so if you, if you're coming for signage on Ridge Road and asking, you know, I'd be a little bit more forgiving, but it worries me a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, we typically, you know, require seeing this stuff. I will say, for what it's worth, Mr. Huber, that, you know, if the, the direction of these lights are going to be essentially shining the light into their own site.
Yes.
And for, also for what it's worth, there is a site lighting pole located approximately six feet past this, so it's already an illuminated area, for what it's worth. I agree, though, we typically see this stuff.
My, I guess, my, if there were to be a problem in the future, you know, if a resident was like, "This is too bright," there's no plan to look at, because we're kind of just saying it's going to be lit. There would be no, nothing for them.
We can look at the orientation of the sign and the site plan, and I mean, it's pretty clear that they're going to be shining, thank you, shining into the site. I don't see how it would affect anybody but the actual proposed site itself.
Just, can I ask one question? That might be helpful to me.
Yep.
The sign is actually back on the property, right? It's not on hold itself?
Correct.
So, how many feet onto the property?
It is, so you have that, you have the site plan, shows where the sign is, so it was chosen for that area, because it starts to bend up toward the building, so that any direction of the light on the sign will be toward the building. How many feet is that?
It could be 30 feet, but it looks like it's behind the fourth house on Whitlock, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so I'm not going to have a problem.
More than 30 feet, but yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just guessing. Yeah, the only one that I'd be concerned about is the folks on Whitlock, and as long as we had some way to shield it or had some language to shield it, we're okay. As far as I, you know, but I'm one guy here, so.
This is upmounted? It's like coming up from the ground, is that how it's working?
Yes.
Are there shields on it?
I'd have to check, there was supposed to, that was the idea.
Probably right, yeah.
From our previous discussions about, to prevent as much spillage as possible.
42 feet away from the property line to the start of the sign. I'll state that again. So the base of the sign, not even where the sign is, because the sign sits in board of the base, but the base of the sign is about 42 feet from the property, the rear property line of the houses on Whitlock. So the start of the sign, and there's also those trees that we required to be planted back there. I mean, I do a fair amount of lighting work, and I can't imagine that any light from this would be anywhere in comparison to the street poles that they, you know, their site lights.
I don't think it's going to be a problem. It's just a.
I think we just have to figure out a condition and how we can, how we can state that to make sure we have some teeth if there's an issue.
Yeah, we're also going to have to put it in here, because it's not part of the application.
Right. So, okay, any other questions for the applicant on this? Ms. Murray?
What's the plan for the lighting, on and off?
It would be a timer for dusk to approximately dawn, so it would be an overnight lighting.
Do we have any comments on that that we want to discuss? Okay, all right. Anything else for the applicant? All right, with that, please take a seat. This is a public hearing, again, as well, correct? This was listed as a public hearing, I believe, in the.
Yes, it is.
All right, I will, I will open up the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak with regards to this manner, please come to the podium. Going once, twice. All right, we will close the public hearing, seeing there is no public comment. All right, discussion by the board on how we want to proceed on this? How do we want to word this?
I mean, we're going to have to condition the whole application now with the lights as an addition to this, because it's not, he didn't apply for it. I would like, if we're going to do that, that we make sure that they're shielded only to presentation, that the light, there's no spillage beyond the sign itself. And it's limited now to under 4,000 Calvin? And while it doesn't make a world of difference to me, I like the new font.
It's a tweak, I guess.
Yeah. I do have a question for the applicant, though, and I did ask at workshop what the material was for the, the sign, the lettering itself. I know what it is for the, the sign, it's vinyl.
Scott Prossus, Rochester Management. Laser-cut aluminum.
It's, okay.
Yep.
Great, thank you. And the color? Was blue, right?
The.
Like a lighter blue?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, passing along. Yeah, yep.
Okay, anything else from the board? I made some notes, I may try to make a stab at the actual.
Go for it.
Motion, but first we got to address seeker. This is a type 2 action. Correct? Okay. All right, so let me take a stab at a motion here. So, with regards to PB 2021-08-3, I vote, or I move that we approve the application as submitted with the following conditions. That as lighting is now part of the application, lighting shall be shielded and shall not spill lighting beyond the sign location. And that light fixtures be 4,000 Kelvin maximum in color. Do I have a second on that?
Sure. I'll second it. Didn't sound like Jackie, though.
No, it was Alan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we have three absent. Motion carries four zero. Thank you. All right, when you're ready, Secretary.
PB 2021-08-4, upon the matter of request by Soam Burn Sales, Inc. for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a 4,232 square foot Burn Dairy Retail Store Deli and fueling facility with a freestanding fuel canopy and fuel pumps on premises 2180 East Ridge Road in the C Business District.
Would you like the site plan kind of situated that way? Are you guys able to see and?
I think.
Kind of towards the audience?
Maybe, maybe just turn it three degrees towards us, if you could. I can't quite, that's, that's actually already perfect right there. Thank you very much. Yep, that's great. Thank you.
First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Thank you for having me, board. My name is Erin Brown. I'm here representing Soam Burn Sales, Burn Dairy. Our corporate office is at 171 Route 5 in the town of Elbridge. So I believe tonight, what we're looking to do here is kind of formally put our proposed project out to the board to get some good feedback. I understand that our layout and our site plan right now is really preliminary, and it's, we're working on it, we're just trying to get some more feedback to try to figure out what works best for the site. So our site is located at 2180 East Ridge Road. It's the northeast corner of Ridgewood Drive and East Ridge Road. The property is zoned C Business District, which means that our retail store is permitted in this zoning. The property itself is 1.627 acres. Most people know it's the former town of Rondacoyt Library. More recently, it was used as a DPW site as well, and I think most recently, it's been vacant for quite some time. What we're looking to do is to construct a 4,232 square foot retail store. It's a Burn Dairy and Deli, along with a fueling facility. The fueling facility that we've proposed is right here on the site plan. It's for four gas pumps, which would be eight fueling positions. That would be a maximum of eight cars fueling at any one time. One of the things that we have gotten some feedback on and we have decided to implement is a parapet-style canopy. We have not submitted that to the board as of yet, but we have taken that feedback and intend to implement that going forward. Additionally, we have two curb cuts that we're looking to implement. The existing one on East Ridge Road, we're going to utilize, as well as an additional one on Ridgewood Drive, which lines up with the Walgreens. As of late, what we have received is a conceptual approval from the MCDOT, Monroe County Department of Transportation, on both of those curb cuts. This actually was a letter that was directed to the town, which our traffic engineer was copied in on, and he provided us a copy of just this past Thursday, so I'm not sure if the town has had the opportunity to review that. But essentially, the MCDOT has pretty much approved both, citing that there's no issue with traffic capacity in the area. We are also implementing a lighting plan. We do work with a lighting architects out of Ohio, the professional firm. They provide us with lighting plans that ensure that we provide dark-skY-friendly compliant lighting on the site, which means that there will be zero-foot candles on all property lines, there will be no lighting spill. And I do understand that this site plan is subject to change at this point, and we're working through it. They will work with us alongside to ensure that that zero-foot candle, no lighting spill remains throughout. In our informational packet, which I believe you all have a copy of, we have the pictures of the signage that we intend to utilize. One of the things that was brought up and that we want to implement as well is a monument sign with the stone base, and that looks a little bit nicer, has a little bit more style with a lot of landscaping around the base is what we're hoping to do. If anybody wants to see that, you can check out our other property that just opened last week in the town of Grease on the corner of Maiden Lane and Fencener Road. That has that same style monument sign that we're looking to implement. Additionally, again, we're not exactly sure as to how the site will be laid out, so for building sign, we do intend to have one that would likely face East Ridge Road, is that, that's what the intention would likely be. But that is also, there's a copy of that in the informational packet as well. We also do, we certainly understand that this does above a residential neighborhood, and we're working and very opening, open to doing any sort of mitigating efforts to address any issues that anybody might have. We do have in the informational packet a six-foot custom cedar fence to go along the Northolee property line. We have also discussed, at least in the town board meeting, we brought up things like dark evergreen arborvitae, additional silver maples. There are just, we're open to kind of adding to the aesthetic of the property, to making any kind of buffering measures that we can to the layout. So at this point, the project has gone before the town board, that was just last Tuesday, so we did get a lot of feedback from the neighbors, and we're taking that all into account, and we're trying to get additional feedback at this point, so that we can implement any sort of measures that we can, because we're looking to work with everybody to make this work for everyone, for the town. I guess at this point, I open up to entertain any questions from the board.
I just have a staff question. The town board did not yet make a ruling, correct?
That's right, they tabled the item.
Wanted to confirm that, thank you. Okay. Okay, questions from the board? Mr. Huber, you want to have the hot seat first?
Just one little one. And I don't want to go into a whole thing on traffic here. I know that probably a lot of people have concerns about that. However, I do know that the Monroe County usually takes the front seat in reviewing that traffic study, and that's the only reason that I bring up this question, and that's because the county comments from August 2nd, number six, on the second page, that they're waiting for the traffic study, is that, it sounds like they already have it, and I just wanted to make, give you the opportunity to say that they already have it, and they've been reviewing it, and they're doing all the things that they need to do in order to review those traffic impacts.
Correct. Once you're able to see the letter, which I'm sure, like I said, it just came through last Thursday, so it probably hasn't even made its way down to you yet, it is in reference to the traffic impact study that we provided to the town, as well as to the MCDOT.
I just wanted to make sure, because I'm sure we'll hear comments about that. I want to make sure that everybody knows that there are multiple levels of government reviewing the traffic.
Absolutely, yep.
Ms. Murray?
Mine's going to center around this traffic study, just because I'm a little perplexed on why there was no school traffic brought into this.
So, in the traffic study, they, you know, again, I'm not a traffic engineer, so I'm not going to act as though I am. Reading through the traffic study, they have made the necessary adjustments to account for the fact that school was not in session, as well as the fact that COVID, the pandemic, is present. So how they go about doing that, they have adjusted the numbers for those purposes.
Tell me where that's at, so I can take a look.
Sure. It is actually right, if you turn to the third page, I'm not even sure that they're numbered, below the peak hours, where those are noted. So it looks like in the third. So it looks like in the third paragraph down, the first section there says the peak hour traffic volumes were compared to the New York State DOT annual average traffic daily for daily traffic counts on East Ridge Road in order to identify any adjustments that may be necessary to account for impacts associated with COVID-19 pandemic as well as local schools not being in session. So in some fashion, the engineers were able to account for that, those two factors playing into this.
And the county has all that information?
Correct. They have this entire study.
Okay, and a recollection for me, that is the only U-turn intersection on that part of East Road?
That I'm familiar with, yes.
Okay, and that would actually, um, a U-turn and a left-hand turn out of that driveway, or a right-hand turn out of that driveway could lead to a situation that would not be something anybody would be searching for.
I mean, certainly proposing that doesn't sound. I, I, the one thing I can say and comment on in terms of Monroe County Department of Transportation is I've been personally involved. I've worked with Soenburn for six years personally in development as well as on the outside for a law firm, um, in terms of representing them on real estate days, deals for 10 years prior to this. When Monroe County Department of Transportation is involved, safety is the utmost importance. And this is the first time that I've ever received comments back from them basically saying that these curb cuts are a non-issue. Move on to the permitting process. First time I've ever seen that.
Their curb cuts based on the traffic study, so they've approved the traffic study?
They've, I, I'm not sure how exactly. They basically take the traffic study into consideration, do their own analysis. I don't know the details of that.
I'll be interested to see that and also the information back from our town.
I do have copies of these. I don't know if I can, copies of the letter if the board wants those.
Sure. I mean, we'll get them eventually.
Up to you.
I don't have any questions about the site plan tonight just because I don't think we're there yet. And, um, I'm really interested in hearing from the neighbors.
Sure.
Okay. Alright, please take a seat, thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing. Um, assuming that you're all not just here for your interest in how a planning board meeting operates tonight, please come on forward, feel free to form a line. Um, we'll give everybody time. Uh, we do try to limit it to no more than five minutes per person. Um, but please feel free to come on up. So state your name and address, please.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Anna Zangie. I live at 60 Abington Road. Um, the neighbors and I got together this past weekend and we put together a petition.
Can you pull down the mic so we can hear you a little bit? Yeah. Close.
The neighbors and I came together and we put together a petition in opposition to the Burn Dairy. And here are our major concerns. Um, traffic. The, we feel that the traffic study is flawed because it was done on July 8th when school was non-session and, um, the COVID pandemic has caused many to be working from home and not commuting back and forth to work. Under normal circumstances, this, um, area receives a high volume of traffic, especially during the morning and evening commute and the afternoon when the school is dismissed. The proposed Burn Dairy, um, will add to the traffic congestion causing it to funnel into our neighborhood. A second point is pedestrian safety, safety and quality of life. Our subdivision experiences a steady stream of foot traffic from East Ridge High School to school students and, um, middle school bus stop, dog walkers, exercise, ers and the like. And the inter- the increased traffic will reduce our quality of life and endanger those pedestrians. Noise. The proposed business will generate a high volume of noise that will echo throughout our neighborhood. Increased traffic, car doors being open and closed, loud music from car stereos, heating and air conditioning systems, supply delivery trucks, fuel trucks, snow plowing and general maintenance equipment. Pollution. Building lights, headlights from patrons, litter, poor air quality and possible soil and ground contamination from the fuel tanks. Decline in property values. That will be experienced throughout the whole neighborhood, but especially for the five homes that will, that share a borderline with Burn Dairy will suffer the greatest loss. Those houses are on less than a quarter acre with approximately 30 foot setback. So that gas station is going to be pretty much in their backyard. Um, hours of operation were strongly opposed to the 24/7. And the last, I feel personally, most important is crime. Convenience stores are known for their high rate of robberies and other types of crimes, including carjackings. Spent a couple hours going through the neighborhood. We got 44 signatures. Um, many of the neighbors were not home because it is summer and they were on vacation. And I feel that if we just given a little more time and gone during the week, we could at least double this. Can I present this to the?
Please give it to our secretary, thank you.
And that's it.
Thank you very much. Please feel free to come right on up if there's more people that would like to speak. What's that?
Was that it?
Hi, I'm Patty Burke. I live at 122 Worthington Road. So I'm at the very end of Ridgewood. My concerns are, I don't know who's doing these traffic studies, but if you live there, if there's two cars in a row trying to turn left on East Ridge, you're not going to both get out, let alone they're projecting 80 cars an hour. So what's going to happen is you're going to get a bottleneck. So people are going to get torqued because they don't want to wait and they're going to fly down Ridgewood. Well, guess how many people blow off that stop sign as it is? Once a week, I almost get hit going into my own driveway. There's tons of kids out there riding their scooters. There's people that walk their dogs. We have a nice quiet neighborhood. Now I have to fear I'm going to have a parade going by my house, which is obviously going to decrease my property values. Not to mention the lights coming into my living room, my bedroom from all hours of the evening. You know, I don't think anybody has a problem with Burn Dairy per se. It's just, that's not, that's not going to work where the traffic is. There's two median's there. There's just no way anybody can turn left. So they're either going to U-turn around or they're going to come whipping around to get down to Culver. It's going to be a nightmare. And when some kid gets hit or somebody's dog gets hit, now it's too late. You know, I just don't see how that can work with an exit on Ridgewood. I don't know if, has the town done a traffic study? I mean, is there any projections for an extra light, an extra stop sign? You know, my concern is, like I said, cars go whipping down there as it is to avoid the light. What happens when, you know, they're projecting another 80 cars an hour? Not to mention these tankers coming in with gas. Are they going to be driving by my house because they can't get in and get out? So those are my concerns.
Thank you.
Um, can you state which street were you on?
I, 122 Worthington.
Worthington, I thought so.
So hello, my name is Jeremy McGuire. I'm a resident. I own a house on 15 Ridgewood Drive, which is basically directly across the street from where the Burn Dairy Mart is. And I think a lot of the issues have been raised by other people, but the biggest thing that concerns me is, A, the lighting from headlights and everything coming out of the gas station into my living room and my bedroom. Secondly, the, the traffic issue, which has been addressed by everybody else. But if people are pulling out into, uh, Ridgewood, it's going to be like directly across from my driveway. Those are my issues.
Thank you.
I'm Mary Jo Sandy. I live at 46 Abington Road.
Oh, I'm sorry, can you say it again?
Mary Jo Sandy. I live at 46 Abington Road.
What was the street?
Abington Road.
Okay, speak it.
Yeah, Abington Road. Um, my thing is, is Wegmans is, um, on, well, right near our street on Abington Road. And when they were put in there or they built that, um, they were told that there would be no access to our street. Um, therefore, and they have been very accommodating. They're good neighbors. Um, there should be no traffic that comes down Ridgewood at all because, um, there, people are going to be lined up. They're going to turn around in driveways. They're going to come down my street and go around to exit at Culver. Um, you know, if, if wagon, if Wegmans, uh, accommodated that, that rule and I don't know why they haven't gotten that rule that no one should be coming into our, um, neighborhood. And also when you leave out of the library, there's a right and a left turn you can make because there's not that center thing at that point. Okay, so that's just why they, it would be horrendous. And with the kids walking around in the school and the buses and them turning down Ridgewood, it wouldn't work.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sandy Orem and I live at 20 Salem Road. There's a lot of different things. Um, I listened to the woman who was presenting and she said, uh, there's one in Grease, Burn Dairy on the corner of Maiden Lane and Fensner. And if you compare that corner to where Ridgewood Drive and East Ridge Road is, you can't even compare them at all because this is a very strange corner. And it's residential, it's right up against us. And, um, so anyways, it's just, it's just very, it's not a good place to put a gas station and all of that. Plus, we already have so many gas stations on East Ridge Road and then one on the end of Buchanan and Titus. Plus, if they want to put a convenience store in, we have Ammons and we have Sunoco. I mean, we have a gas station right there, Sunoco. And what if they put Sunoco out of business? Then you have an empty lot there. So you're dealing with a piece of land that you need to sell because it's sitting there. But what if Sunoco goes out of business? Then you have an eyesore there. Um, and we have Wegmans. We got a Quigleys moving in where Wombach's was. So Sunoco has food, then Quickville and Speedway and Tops, Delta Sonic down the way. I mean, how many gas stations do you need? Plus, last week, Christian was, we were talking about the gas tanks in the ground and how, you know, close we are and everything. And he got back up and said, oh, you know, we've got these really super duper modern, safe, double walled tanks or whatever. The thing is, nothing is, you know, you could have a leak. I mean, nothing is perfect. And if you have a leak or explosion, it is right in our backyard. But if you drive down East Ridge Road, you can notice that gas stations and large businesses, the residents are pretty far setback from that. And this is right up next to us. So, um, when I also talked to Christian Brunel, he, his response to me about having the exit onto Ridgewood, you know, validating that was, well, Walgreens has one. But the thing is, Walgreens wouldn't have 85 to 105 customers per peak hour. And hardly anyone uses that exit. I mean, we all know that, you know? And what if people go from Burn Dairy Gas Station and cut through Walgreens? That's a strange kind of using that you can cut over to Culver. People will get hit, I mean, a pedestrian, I guarantee you will get hit walking out that or to their car because someone's going to be whipping through because they want to get on quickly. Car's going to get hit. Um, and also, I moved into the neighborhood about four years ago and one thing that really attracted to me was it's quiet, really quiet. And there's like a nice loop you can walk. And I have a dog and I'll tell you one thing, in the winter, Arondacoit doesn't plow the sidewalks very well. And I have called and neighbors have called. So what happens is we have to walk in the street. So I'll go down Salem to Ridgewood, to Worthington, to cross Culver to go down there. But you have to walk in the street because, I mean, unless you want to like really walk through, I mean, it's just impossible. And if we have this traffic, I mean, a person is going to get hit. A dog is going to get hit. And, um, now, I mean, we can't stand it that the plows, sidewalks aren't plowed, but at least we have the option of the street. But we won't have that. We won't have that. It will be crazy. And, um, a lot of people from the other side of Culver in that neighborhood, whether they have dogs or whatever, they come over to our neighborhood and walk around the big loop because it's quiet and it's nice and people keep their, you know, their houses up and we're friendly and we get to know each other. And that's not going to be like that anymore. And it's just sad. I, I'm exhausted. I think a lot of people are exhausted and I'm stressed. And it's been a lot of tears and a lot of, you know, and all this and, you know, I just, this is just a really bad choice. And I know you need to sell this spot, but even the principal of East Arondacoit did not know this. I called him and he was very upset because he's worried about his students because they rely on people stopping at the corner of Ridgewood and East Ridge Road for people to kindly let them cross when they're walking down East Ridge Road. And someone's going to get hit. You know, it's, it's just not, no matter how, how you work it, it's just, you know. So that's, that's what I want to say. And I don't want to move. And I don't want property taxes to go and I don't want my neighbors to move, you know? And there's, all of a sudden, there's a whole bunch of young kids in the neighborhood. There's four-year-old twins that ride their scooters and they are the cutest little boys. And there's a family with really young kids and they ride their bikes. And you can say, oh, they're not supposed to ride their bikes in the street. And, you know, they do ride their bikes on the sidewalk and stuff, but there's only a sidewalk on one side of the road, on each side. So, um, and there's a young family who lives fourth house down on Ridgewood to East Ridge Road. They'll be doing a lot of U-turns in her driveway, I bet. But she's got three young kids and I don't know if she's here tonight, but I really feel for her. So that's what I want to say.
Thank you for your input.
Hi, Adam Field from 54 Abington Road. So my main concerns with that, there's a lot of others, but obviously what you guys control is, I mean, that main outlet into Ridgewood. Don't understand why they have that. Right on their other piece of property, they're going to have an outlet onto Ridge Road to take a right. If we have an outlet into our road, the only reason that's there is for people to cut through our neighborhood to get on the Culver Road quicker. You know, coming back, they're going to cut down our road if they're on Culver to get into the gas station. It's just to avoid lights. There's absolutely no need for that. As far as the lighting, I know she said she did a whole bunch of surveys and tests and stuff for no light pollution, but there's no way, there can't be light pollution. I'm sure there's guidelines for gas stations where it has to be lit up enough if a fire or something happens for it to be safe. You can't flood that thing with light and say, well, we focused them down. So there's no light pollution in the neighborhood. There has to be. You're going to increase it. And then, uh, the noise, we already deal with Wegmans right now. It was just coming to my wife today and how we're walking the dog in the neighborhood in their air conditioners on 24 hours a day. It is loud. We're going to add another one because it's another 24-hour, um, location that's going to have an air conditioning on the whole time. They got to stick that thing somewhere. Those are not quiet. So all these things adding up, they keep saying they're going to control it, control it, control it. There's things they physically can't control because you have to have lights. You have to have air conditioners. There's going to be noise. You can't, uh, control the cars that are coming in. If they want to blare their music, peel out of there. You know, 2:00 AM, you hear the motorcycles going down, um, the expressway there. They need a place to fuel up and hang out to congregate at 2:00 in the morning. They've got now a 24-hour gas station right there, right off the expressway to congregate in. So there's things that they can't control that I think is, we're just going to be stuck with. It's just going to be annoyance and we're going to have no recourse other than that we keep calling noise complaints on them to the IPD where they just get annoyed and say, you know, there's nothing we can do. Quit calling. We're going to be stuck. So hopefully take all this into consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chad Wright. I live at 59 Salem Road. Um, I was here last week and I said a couple of things to the special use committee for the, the gas permit and I just want to repeat a couple of those. And I just want to repeat a couple of those here. Um, mainly, my concern comes around where the need was determined for another gas station specifically. Um, the gentleman that presented last week noted that I believe there are eleven gas stations within a two-mile radius, six of those being twenty-four hour operation. I just don't understand why there's this need to have an additional one. Especially when you consider things like most automakers going all-electric by twenty thirty, less people commuting. Obviously, COVID has an impact right now. But a lot of rules, including mine, are going to be fully remote or a hybrid remote. And obviously, schools are staying that way for the foreseeable future. So less traffic there. So those are my um, gas-specific comments. Um, some things that I'd like to call out tonight, um, the young lady mentioned the new store that just opened at the corner of Maiden and Fetzner. I looked up a photo of that quickly in the monument sign, um, which actually raised a new concern for me tonight. Those signs, unless she corrects me and says otherwise, have illuminated gas prices. If that is right along East Ridge Road and I'm sitting at that intersection trying to make a left-hand turn out of there, there's no way, especially at night with those bright, like, there's no way to dim those lights. They're really bright red or blue LED lights illuminating gas prices. It's going to be nearly impossible to see to the left. Um, she also mentioned a unique style of canopy that I'm not familiar with. So I'm just looking for some clarification there on what makes that different from what I would assume is a normal gas canopy. My primary concerns, like most others, is that this is not only, some may perceive it as bringing a benefit to the neighborhood. I think most of us don't. But I see it as really limiting our use to our own neighborhood. Um, so people have talked about walking dogs, um, just being out in the neighborhood, riding bicycles. One of my neighbors, two doors down, is on a motorized wheelchair and rides around all of the time. And these are the things that immediately come to my mind from a safety concern. From a convenience concern, there are five people on my street alone that have either tow behind campers, myself included, or drivable RVs. On the street behind us, I believe that's Ebbington Road, there is one person with a drivable RV. I have a thirty-eight-foot camper. Getting that out of the neighborhood is a huge pain. And I can't even imagine doing it if there's cars lined up and down Ridge Road. If I'm trying to make a right out of Salem and someone comes flying down the road, you can't stop a thirty-eight-foot camper that easily. And it's not really that convenient for me to have to turn right onto Ridgewood, left onto the other street, and then left at the light to get out onto Culver. So I'm no longer going to be able to use that access myself. Someone mentioned that Walgreens has um, an entrance onto Ridgewood Road. They do, but they also have an exit out onto East Ridge Road and an exit directly onto Culver. So when we think about path of least resistance, people are going to take whatever is simplest. And in this case, that's going to be to come out onto Ridgewood and cut around the corner to go down Culver Road. Walgreens doesn't seem to experience that because they have direct access to Culver already. I think that curb cut is really one of the primary concerns here. When we bought our house four years ago, I can tell you that when we toured it, Wegmans being so close, even though we're two streets away, really, was a huge concern. We've been pleasantly surprised. Wegmans is a good neighbor. They really don't have much noise or light for us being as far away as we are. But I can tell you that it's gotten markedly better now that Wegmans isn't twenty-four hours. So the idea of another twenty-four-hour shop coming back in is really concerning for me. Um, and again, I really, I think it's been inspiring to see how many people are actually coming out and talking about this and concerned with it. I would hate to see something like this just slide through. I get that there's only so much that you can control, but I hope that you'll take our comments into consideration and put some reasonable accommodations into place, especially when it comes to traffic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm at sixty-six Orland Road. My name is Hermina Volpe Van Dyk. If you need a spelling, I can give it to you later. Um, I just recently found out about this, the Burn Dairy coming. And my concern is actually a question. Has this already been decided? This is really going to happen? And right now, we're just tinkering with what we can do? Or is there still a possibility that it's gonna get voted down?
Um, we generally don't answer questions right now. I will answer your question in that, no, the whole purpose of us being here is to vet this project and see if it's something that is a viable project. So nothing is, nothing is decided at this point.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Good evening. I'm Larry Van Mullen, thirteen Ebbington Road. I own the house directly behind where they want to put their gas tanks. And I'm really concerned about this. Um, I'm gonna repeat a lot of what's been said, but I typed this out because I don't want to forget. I'm really frustrated at the inability to even access the plans for this. It's like I contacted Mr. Brunel after, this is the third meeting I've been to about this. And he gave me his card and I emailed him and he responded with, uh, thanks for reaching out. I'm taking a couple of days off and I'll get back to you on Monday. And that was three weeks ago. And I haven't heard anything from him. I asked for some kind of a link to the plans and some kind of a link maybe to this traffic study.
Um, before you go on, for anyone here, you could call the town planning division and we'll send it to you. I've sent it to several people. They've asked the traffic study and everything. So
That's good to know.
Just so you know, that we could do that tomorrow morning. Okay.
Great, that would be really appreciated. Um, okay. So my home is my biggest asset, and I believe that this is really gonna decrease the value of my house. It's, not many people have a noisy, well-lit twenty-four-hour gas station on their wish list when they're looking for a property. I've spent a lot of time and money making my backyard a really beautiful and restful place. And I keep my hammock in the far back, which is right behind the fence to where this gas station is gonna be. Hopefully not. Uh, I got a pergola with a seating area, outdoor eating, a large deck on the back of my house. And one feature that I really love when I bought the house is I have a sleeping porch on the back of my, my house, which I use whenever it's not too humid to sleep out there. I'm never gonna be able to use it again. It's like, there's, there's no way cars pulling in and out of a gas station twenty-four hours a day is gonna, is gonna be suitable for sleeping in my, my own sleeping porch anymore. I'm concerned about any twenty-four-hour business being allowed on this spot. Um, because it's just so close to a residential area. A gas station will be in constant in and out of cars, trucks, motorcycles, doors slamming, music booming, people talking, gas pumps beaking, car locks beeping. And then there's the dated deliveries, the dumpster pickup, the gas tankers, et cetera. The noise travels really well around there at night. And a six-foot fan is not gonna block the noise. I also feel like somebody else has mentioned, and I'm the one that brought it up at the last meeting, there's already eleven gas stations within two miles. Eleven gas stations. It's, it's just ludicrous to add another one to that list. Um, the traffic is a huge concern. It's already very difficult to make a left onto East Ridge from Ridgewood Road. The entrance to the proposed Burn Dairy is already designed, uh, designated a U-turn location for people exiting the plaza from the last exit across the road that want to go the other way on, on East Ridge. Many people just U-turn at the Ridgewood intersection already. And then you're already dealing with trying to watch traffic coming from Culver, then traffic coming out of the other plaza entries and Wegmans and the other exits. And, you know, people doing the U-turns and everything. It's, it's almost impossible to make a left-hand turn already uh, several times during the day. There will be accidents. That means people will undoubtedly cut through our neighborhood to Worthington and then to get on Culver the other way. There's hardly any through traffic in our neighborhood right now, and that's why many of us live there. There's also quite a lot of foot traffic along East Ridge Road with kids walking to school or people walking to Wegmans. I think this will be a much greater risk for them crossing Ridgewood and the entrances and exits from the proposed project. Mr. Brunel assures everyone that a traffic study's been carried out. And I admit I haven't read the entire thing, but I have read a couple of pages of it. And to me, it appeared that the traffic was studied a couple hours in the morning and a couple hours in the afternoon on a sunny day in July when school is closed. We have to make that turn all hours of the day and all year round. You add school traffic, a sporting event, closing time at the plaza, a moving letting out when the theater reopens, even just the traffic from the highway department workers letting out. There are times now when traffic turning left onto Culver is backed up all the way past the Ridgewood turn, waiting to turn left onto Culver Road. You add snow, slush, and ice to that mix and see what happens. A sunny day in July is not a traffic study. It's a brief snapshot designed to make it look like there's never gonna be a problem there. The traffic issue has been brought up by nearly everyone who's made comments about this project. Do you base your decision on a study done one afternoon in July or on the opinion of people who make that turn every single day of the year? One thing I found really disturbing about this process is the fact that Burn Dairy or anyone wanting to build on that lot can apply for a variance. The first meeting was for not having sixty feet at the back of the property. The second meeting was a um, variance to get gas tanks. But yet, when half a neighborhood shows up at the meeting, uh, the, the last meeting we were at last week to express concerns that we don't want a twenty-four-hour business there, they said, well, it's zone commercial. There's really nothing you can do about it. That's not right. It's, it's like if all these businesses can give variances to suit them, I think a neighborhood should have the ability to get a variance to stop something that they don't want. So thanks for hearing me out.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Donahue. I live at twelve Salem Road. A lot of the pieces that I wanted to add to this have already been said by everybody here today. So I just wanted to reiterate some of it. Um, there would be no benefit to this business in our area, I feel like. Because everything that we would want to get from this place is already offered, like they've said, in a two-mile radius. We have Wegmans, we have various gas stations, we have everything we would need in that area. Uh, I moved into that area about five years ago. The main benefit was how quiet, how beneficial it was to start to try and raise a family there, to look at the school districts, to benefit from what this quiet little right-off-of-main-street neighborhood did offer. And I feel like that's something that would be taken away. It's something that we've considered. If this does go in, we would look at moving. It's something that uh, we just don't feel is a fit for right behind us in this small area. We've brought it up that turning onto Ridgewood would ultimately be the path of least resistance for a lot of people. Um, you know, I, I drive out, I've worked in the area. Pulling a left there, cutting across onto Ridge is great if nobody's double parked or kind of sitting in the middle there, cutting her out to the right, same way. It's just you add five, ten more cars to that, you add a slow backup, you add people that are unfamiliar with the area trying to get the easiest way out. They're gonna cut down Ridgewood, they're gonna go a direction that puts us down in our streets. I look at all the kids in the neighborhood, young families that are starting up, high school kids. There's always somebody out playing basketball, there's somebody walking their dog, or somebody just hanging out with family. Uh, that would change that dynamic, which would change everybody's point of view. And I think it would change a lot of people's point of view about how things are handled here if it just gets ignored for a business that, again, is repetitive for something that we already have in this neighborhood and really doesn't offer us anything. I love their ice cream, don't get me wrong, but other than that, what are you really giving this neighborhood besides what everybody's complained about more than anything that we're benefiting from?
Thank you. Thank you.
Robin Winters, sixty-three Ridgewood Drive. I did send an email to the town board a couple of weeks ago and you should have all of my concerns. And all of my concerns have been addressed by the folks that have already spoke. And I just want to reiterate their major concerns, especially getting off from Ridgewood Drive. Turning left or right can be challenging, given the different times of the days. Left, um, you've got cars coming out the plaza when school's being let out, when Wegmans is being let, you know, traffic going in and out. Try to turn left on a holiday because Wegmans traffic is backed up to Ridgewood Drive. And then if you want to turn right to get to Culver, because that's the ideal way to get to one oh four, most, a lot of times you can't do that because the traffic is backed up to Ridgewood Drive. So you can't get over in the left-hand lane to turn left. So you gotta go past Culver and go down through one of the residential neighborhoods to cut over to Culver Road to get over to one oh four. So there's a lot of concerns with the traffic. I don't believe the traffic study was done appropriately. Um, given um, the issues that we who live in the neighborhood see every day. There should be a real traffic study done when there's traffic going on. And it should be longer than a couple hours, you know, during the day. I went out earlier today and I started Googling all the other Burn Dairies around the neighborhood, around the town. And most of those that I could see, none of them butt up to a residential neighborhood. They're on corners, but those corners are all in commercial areas. They do not have neighbors in the backyard. So I don't think this is a good spot for Burn Dairy. It is too residential. We like our neighborhood and I think it should be reconsidered. And especially, an entrance onto Ridgewood Drive is not um, ideal. As previous people have spoken, it will put the traffic down Ridgewood Drive. And there is, that would not be good for our neighborhood. And cutting, they will cut through Walgreens and go over to Culver to get out or to Ridge there. So I, that's what I have to say.
Could you state your name again?
Robin Winters.
Robin what?
Winters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Dylan Dwyer. Um, I live at one oh five Salem Road. So I share many of the same sentiments um, as my neighbors in the neighborhood. So a lot of this has already been mentioned. Um, but apparently if it's been mentioned, it bears repeating. Um, so three words kind of came to mind when this project was brought to my attention. Uh, those words were a necessity, an irresponsibility, and actually an opportunity. So first necessity, um, that's something that's defined by an actual need of something. So there's currently ten to eleven gas stations, depending on how you zone it, within two square miles of where this proposed uh, thing's going to be. So it's not a commodity that anybody needs. It's not a necessity. Nobody desires it to be there. So as a necessity, it's not something that anybody would necessarily need for that. Um, the second is an irresponsibility. So by definition, that shows a lack of concern for the consequences of one's actions. So currently, it's being proposed that we're replacing an institution that once stood for education, growth, learning, positive things, with a place of unnecessary convenience. Um, so that's putting gross resources and unnecessary efforts towards something that's not necessary. So thirdly, is there, uh, there's an opportunity here. So an opportunity is defined as a favorable combination of circumstances in any one time or place. So we currently have an opportunity with this forum to open it up to replace that space with something that would actually benefit the community. So I think this is a good opportunity to have that conversation with everyone. Um, so I think we do have a responsibility to actually open up that conversation and not have it with something that's uh, unnecessary and something that would benefit our community.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot previous. Patty Burke, one-two-two Worthington Road. I just wanted to say that had not one of the neighbors got together and handed out some information about this, none of us would have even known. And I have a problem with that. I mean, I know there's certain rules, you know, you have to notify within a distance. But that doesn't affect just those people. This affected the whole neighborhood. And I kind of got a problem with that, that nobody was aware of this, you know, other than getting a flyer in your door. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to add at the moment? All right, so I'm gonna invite the uh, the applicant back up to, to answer some or, hang on one second, let me just state this, please. Uh, some, some are all the, the concerns, but for the public's sake, I would just like to uh, let you know right now, we're not going to close the public hearing right now or likely tonight at all. Um, so this will stay open for public comment. Um, clearly, as the applicant stated earlier, uh, you know, there, there's not sufficient information here that we could move or vote on anything, just a minute, please, uh, that we could move or vote on anything tonight uh, anyway. So the public hearing will absolutely stay open for public comment in the future. So uh, I, we don't really take questions, but please go ahead, ask one question and then we're gonna move forward.
Do you want me to say?
You're fine.
Is it possible for um, us to be notified when you discuss it next?
So for, I, I understand where you're coming from. Let me, let me. Yeah, understood. So, so again, we're not gonna get into a, a back and forth conversation here right now. Um, but I, I knew that's where you were headed. I was pretty sure you weren't. I wanna, I wanna cover that. So um, one, all the meetings are listed on the town's agenda website and so on, uh, or on our website through our agendas. Um, but Ms. Secretary, and maybe I'm gonna put you in a, a position where uh, I'm creating some more work for, for staff here. But um, I, I don't know, there are rules and regulations as, as far as who gets notified, uh, what radius, what area, how many properties away, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know those all by heart. But um, if, if there are people who did not get notified, Ms. Secretary, that would like to get notified, uh, if they provide their name and address, can we make sure that they get at least a letter about when this will be back in front of the board?
Yeah, that's fine. And also, when you look at the agenda, you'll see the workshop and you'll see board meetings. You could just call or look on the website for the agenda. But just call us because you'll now, you know, you're now part of it. You understand when the dates are. So you won't miss any. Um, the next date we have is, I'm not sure. I have to check because I don't want to give the wrong dates out here when the next um,
Yeah, we have a holiday next month.
Because we have a holiday, so I want to, I want to make sure. But it's on the website. Or you just call the town and then you'll know without any, but you won't miss it.
Our next workshop is September twentieth.
To talk to the town board regarding the special use permit, right? My understanding is that the acting supervisor kept that here. permit, right? My understanding is that the, um, acting supervisor kept that hearing open?
Correct.
Right.
All right, so just, I'll give you one, one second, okay? Um, so, so, probably the easiest way, that this will likely stay an, an active item in, in the near future until something is voted and ruled upon. Probably the easiest way is, is for you and, and to tell any other residents that maybe aren't here tonight if they have interest to, to keep an eye on the agendas that are on, online. They will always be posted prior to a workshop.
Or just the schedule, the, the town board and the planning board schedules, and then you could call us to say, "Is there any new information? Can you send it to me?" Because we'll, we'll email you any new information, or you can come in to look at it.
Okay. All right, I, I'm sorry. We, we really can't get in, I apologize. We really can't get into a back-and-forth. Um, so, with that, would you like to address any of the, uh...
Sure, sure. I just have a few things that I'd like to address. Can I show a picture of, I think it was Mr. Wright had requested to see what actually the parapet-style canopy looks like. So, we have another one of these, which is at our location in Canadagua, which also does, is literally in the center of a residential neighborhood. Um, so we put that parapet-style canopy there. Which can I show?
You can certainly, yeah. Just address all your, you know, statements to us, please. And, and for the, for the public's knowledge, we have not seen that, so that will have to come before us in a formal drawing at some point.
Correct. Um, you also had to mention, Mr. Wright, the illuminated gas light sign, the monument sign in the front. So, the zoning requires that we have a specific setback from the road, which we will, um, we will obviously be, I believe it's 15 feet from the road, which we will, or from the property line, should I say. We will conform with that, so the site distance should be there, and that that's the purpose of that. Uh, so we'll take that in consideration and make sure that the layout conforms to that. Um, I've heard a lot of, um, concerns about pedestrians. Uh, we will make sure, I don't think I touched on this initially, that there is pedestrian access to the site from both Ridgewood Drive as well as East Ridge on the easterly line as well as the northerly line, uh, to make sure that pedestrians can access the site. I know that's not necessarily what they're concerned with, but we are taking into account the vehicular and pedestrian, uh, from what we can do on the site, uh, the, the safety concerns with the two mixing. Um, the other issue that I, a resounding issue that I heard, um, aside from traffic, was the property values. Um, and I myself was very interested in this. I, I kind of looked into this a little bit further, specifically within the town. I contacted the town assessor here in Arondacoit and spoke with her last week. Um, somebody had brought up one of the convenience stores down the street here on Titus Ave, the 7-Eleven, which is a similar setup. It's on a corner. It directly backs a residential neighborhood. Um, I took into account two of the properties that directly are behind the fencing of that convenience store and kind of asked if she could inform me what the assessed values have been over the years. Um, she also did confirm that the assessed value, um, is reflective of the market value of the property. That's the general purpose of the assessment. Um, so I, she was able to confirm for me in 2004, 2010, and 2021, in both of those homes, the property values have increased. I mean, one of them went from 113,000, now up to 134. The other one went from 88,000 up to 113,500. So, the presence of that fueling facility and get, and convenience store, uh, obviously did not negatively affect the property values there, and that was also built in 2000. So, I just want to kind of reiterate that.
Was it comparable to properties on the same street that were not, yes, it went up, but it is, was, was the property, um, you know, this is not a science, I understand.
Correct.
Was it, was it still comparable? Was there, did it seem like the property value may have been affected at all, uh, because of the, uh, gas station being adjacent versus a house across the street, similar size, da-da-da-da-da?
I can't, I can't speak to what would have happened had, you know, a different circumstance be there. I can just speak to the fact that it was built in 2000. The assessed values over the years have shown an increase versus a decrease, which is what I'm, the resounding concern that I'm hearing, is that the presence of that will show a decrease. So, and, and again, as far as the traffic is concerned, I understand that that's a concern. I'm not a traffic engineer. I don't want to speak to something that I can't intelligently give you a resounding understanding of or know that what I am saying is absolutely factual. So, I, I just understand that there's a big concern there. We're doing everything we can to address it, and the one thing that I can say is that in the years of doing this with our specific traffic engineer, these, these, uh, studies that he does are not to give us something that is pleasing to us, because we have certainly gotten some that we would never like to see again, and ones that have obviously been, um, not favorable to the sites that we would have liked to have utilized. So, they're not always done for them. They're certainly not done for that reason. They're done to state the facts of the traffic capacity and the concerns in the area. So, that's all.
Okay, I would, I, I would like to say, I mean, we'll have some board discussion.
May I ask questions?
Yeah.
Before you go, um, I don't think you'll have the answer, and it's okay, because this is complicated, and I want to acknowledge that, and I also want to acknowledge that I'm not a traffic engineer and I could have this wrong, and I'd just like to ask, um, for clarification. So, the last time at the workshop, I had asked about the ITE classification, and, um, so in, you help me see in the packet that you used eight fifty-three, and then I was wondering about the super convenience, um, gas station ITE, um, category, and I looked them up, and I don't have the most recent version of the ITE, and I want to acknowledge all of that. But, um, aside from the number of pumps, the category at nine sixty seems more appropriate. Um, and I say that because, um, it specifically says sites fitting within the land use have a convenience store with a gross floor area of at least 3,000 square feet, which is this place of, uh, 4,000, right?
Correct.
Um, then, here's the part that does not apply, and I want to acknowledge that, and that's 10 or more vehicle fueling stations. Um, so you have eight, so it's not 10, at least in this layout. In another layout we looked at, it would have increased it to 10. So, um, that's something to consider. Um, but then, what, then it said, "Common convenience items available include newspapers, fruit, fresh-ruled coffee, uh, donuts, bakery items, hot and cold beverages, breakfast items, dairy items, fruit, uh, and so on." Um, and then, when I look at the convenience store with gas pumps, uh, eight-five-three, which is the one that you used, it is, uh, consistent in with, it says generally, a convenience store with more than 2,000 square feet, so I guess technically we're okay, and it says less than 10 gas pumps, which we are. Um, but then the description of the convenience store part was not as robust as the description as the convenience store in nine sixty. And so, I'm asking a question about, uh, what the thought process was in using those two categories, because I do know that it's a very nuanced science and that small adjustments in these categories can make big, um, influences on the outcome of the traffic.
And we can certainly reach out to our consultant and ask for some clarification and, uh, get some understanding as to what his thought process was in terms of choosing one versus the other.
And he'll, he might come back and say that, and I'll say, "Okay, I, I understand."
Yeah, absolutely. I, I can't tell you what the answer is as to his thought process, as to why he chooses one versus the other. It sounds like they both could be argued as applicable in one way or the other, so we can certainly get clarification from him.
And is there any, um, ability to, to, we heard a lot of concern about this exit onto Ridgewood, and so I certainly can understand how it would be helpful for site circulation. I'm wondering if it is absolutely, positively, like, a have-to-have, um, because I think that, um, that would go a long way towards the concerns that we heard, and I, I do think it is possible to have a gas station with just the exit onto Ridgewood. I mean, a number of them only have one. Uh, that's just another question I have.
Sure, and I, I certainly don't want to say yes or no.
I'm sure, I'm sure it probably is.
It, I mean, I'm going to say more than likely, it is, um, something that's a necessity, and I can also say, once you do read through the MCDOT letter, they two agree in the necessity for having that as well. So, again, I don't want to speak to the reasons as to why those things are necessary and traffic purposes and, and for what reason that something is necessary is versus...
That's fine. I just want to respond to all of the input that I heard tonight and make sure that, that, uh, the decision is really vetted and that...
Absolutely. I understand.
Based, based on, you know, the, the technical nature of some of the, the traffic study questions, and I think just the general, uh, you know, I was putting tick marks next to each one of my comments here about how many times things were mentioned, and, you know, that hands down was the biggest one, but, um, I think it would certainly behoove you, if it's possible, to have the traffic engineer present at one of the meetings, uh, whether it's via phone or, or...
We can definitely touch base with him. No, absolutely. No, we can definitely touch base with him.
Because I think, hands down, that's going to be the, the biggest questionable item that, that's going to keep coming up, so...
Sure. He is local, so I can't imagine that he would be opposed to that.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from the board tonight?
I am anxious to hear the town board's deliberations on the 24/7. I think that that will affect the site plan greatly, and, um, I know that that was a big concern that was raised this evening, as well as what I was able to see from the, uh, town board meeting, when I watched, and I, you know, that I lead an interesting life if I got to hear you twice. So, but I appreciate you guys being here tonight, so, thank you. That's, I, I think that that will make a big difference in what this board does on the, on your site plan.
Sure.
I'm glad that you raised that, because I do think it's important to point out that this board did make a negative declaration on the, um, on the request for the 24-hour gas station, and that that decision now is in the town board's hands.
Yeah, we did not think that that was a good fit with your neighborhood, and cited that as the reason.
And unfortunately, that's where our ability lies with that. Um, so, so the 24/7 will be in front of the town board, so look at your schedules for that board meeting as well. Other comments from the board?
Negative declaration, a negative referral.
Negative referral, yeah, yeah.
That's important.
I don't, I'm looking forward to, uh, having workshop and seeing the ideas that you guys have brought back.
Yes, I think that the...
With, uh, the input from the neighbors, I think that's really going to be helpful for everybody.
I'm hoping we can come up with some more ideas to present to you guys.
I, I believe that you would like us to adjourn this case for this evening.
Correct, that would be.
If that can be a motion, Mr. Chair.
Is that your, is that your motion, Mr. Richards?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, the, the public hearing is open, just to reiterate that. So, your, your motion is that we adjourn this based on the applicant's request. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, to the next meeting or until the applicant is, is...
Yeah, till the next meeting.
Okay, let's, let's do it to the next meeting, and then, uh...
We can adjourn it.
Again, if we need to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, all right, so, so this will be adjourned then to the next scheduled meeting. Uh, I'm sorry, I had a second on that? Was that you, Ms. Murray? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Uh, Mr. Richards was, uh, our motion. And no opposed, and again, we have three absent. Okay, thank you, everyone, for your input. We appreciate you staying with us and, and giving us your thoughts.
I don't believe we have any minutes.
I don't think we had minutes, right? I didn't. All right, so I, I think we're all...
I can make a motion to adjourn.
Please, I, I love that motion.